I would like to call the October 24, 2023, 3:00 PM session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the board specifically, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later this evening in our meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government, and that's what makes us stronger, is the participation. Our first item of business consideration today is items of consent. Board has had an opportunity to review this. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Will you approve the items of consent written?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Item number six, an acceptance and appropriation of a donation in memory of Randolph Tyler Stone. Mr. Wagner.
So, Mr. Chairman, in the audience today, we have Bill and Kathy Stone. They are the parents of Tyler Stone. They are joined by their other son, Will Stone, and Tyler's uncle, Navy Lieutenant Commander, retired Vincent Stone. Sadly, Tyler Stone passed away on September 21, 2022. And even though Tyler did not live in Henry County at the time of his passing, he always had a strong passion for his hometown. To honor his memory, the Stone family has donated $25,000 to help the county perform the preliminary engineering report, Phase Seven, of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail. Staff is asking the board to acknowledge this donation and appropriate your funds after request.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a few comments on behalf of the board prior to accepting the motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We are extremely grateful for the $25,000 donation made by the family and friends of the late Tyler Stone in his memory. These funds will go toward conducting the preliminary engineering report for the next phase of the Dick and Willie Trail. For those who may be unaware, Tyler was a proud native of Martinsville and Henry County, and he was passionate about the economic welfare of our citizens. He wanted to see a manufacturing resurgence in our area following the devastating effects of NAFTA. Tyler was the grandson of the late William, Senator William F. Stone, who was the namesake for the portion of the Highway 220 bypass which stretches from Route 58 to Stanley Town. Tyler was active in the marching band and the jazz band where he attended Martinsville High School. He worked in Virgil Goode's office before attending law school at Washington and Lee University. Following graduation, Tyler went on to serve his country as a JAG officer in the United States Navy. He served in Iraq and Bahrain during wartime. Before his deployment, Tyler included a request in his will to promote economic development in his hometown. Following a several-year period of declining health, Tyler passed away on September 21, 2022. He is remembered by his family and friends as a kind soul with a knack for impressions and a passion for sports, especially the Wake Forest Demon Deacons. Henry County recently adopted the slogan "Community Connected." By all accounts, this slogan seems to fit Tyler perfectly. No matter how far he traveled, he always loved his community and wanted to see it thrive. It is only fitting that through the use of these funds, we ensure his memory stays connected to the community that he loved.
With that, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to approving and accepting and appropriating this donation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept and appropriate the $25,000 memorial donation in memory of Randolph Tyler Stone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. It's been my pleasure also, and I think it's noteworthy to note that his service to the community is a legacy of others that have served in this community in a number of ways, some of which have served on the national front in armed services, some have served the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we appreciate all of your service and that leading to the contribution, not only monetarily, but the contribution of the community pride in itself. I've served with at least two of these on the pancake line on Kiwanis Day, a couple of occasions, and we've tried not to get too much batter on each other when we were flipping those. But community service and pride in your communities is what makes us all better. Thank you so much to the Stone family. Is there any one of you that would like to offer a comment?
Just a few words on my half of the family, there will be a few. I do want to thank the board for this great creation, great mission of ours. And I think it was mentioned in the member Buchanan's remarks about Tyler made this will actually before going to Iraq during the Iraq War, and he served as a legal officer there. Although he wasn't personally affected by what was going on in NAFTA, so he knew his community was, so it's personal to him. And this idea of about any memorial gifts for economic development came from his will, not from us, not from anybody else, but from his own heart. And we wish to thank the community foundation serving Western Virginia for being the receiving agency for these gifts. We want to thank the staff of the Economic Development Corporation for their help in putting together a project which was appealing to us and we think would have been appealing to Tyler. And lastly, I would like to thank each of you for your service as serving the public. Our family has a high regard for people who offer themselves to do that. And I know several of you personally going back four years in public to the U of A would like to do that, but I remember them quite well. So, thank you so much, and we appreciate it. We probably will be asked to be excused following this because we have a Tyler dog that's with us, and he's in the car with the windows nicely cracked, I'll be glad. Keep it comfortable, but I don't want to prevail on his or his nature too much. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate the courtesy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, we understand moving on to some other things. So, thank you to the members of the Stone family. Agenda item number seven, we'll have a monthly report on the link for tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Brianstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is our report. As of September 29, personal property collection, we have collected 91.65% of the 22 personal property tax. During the month, we collected $84,393. As of September 29, 2023, we collected 95.53% of the 22 real estate tax. For the month, we collected $43,835. Since January of 2023, TACS has collected $912,238. And so far, in the month of October, we've had 15 DMV stops collected. As you should be aware, the 2023 real estate bills have been mailed, and collections are coming in.
If anyone has any questions, Mr. Brianstaff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, we'll have an update with March of Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Keith. Mark, welcome.
Chairman, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity providing a brief update for October and our activities in business development. Valerie Harper conducted a workshop on the 17th that had 11 participants dating on how to bid on state contracts, and you can see all the things that they talk about. This is very important. Workshop for us every year, a lot of people get into the SWAM program and Lot Two certification need to attend this. Again, this year, we'll, through Valerie's efforts, will be conducted the Dine Small, Small Business Saturday. It will be held on November 25. Again, this year, we'll be offering $10 gift certificates to be used at the restaurant, participating restaurants in Martin Luther County. Last year, over 500 certificates of cute mine relatives given out. You can, there's only one chance to get these at the former business center down at the NCI building on Baldwin. You can get these, pick them up on November the 25th. So, I'll remind everyone of that. It's on our business marketing site, and you'll be seeing that in social media posts also. Valerie conducted 14 site visits and/or inquiries during the month. You can see the types of folks she's dealing with, working with, and helping in all the areas. And she facilitated meeting the Till Jones folks in the Carver community in the last couple of weeks about issues there, the traffic and all the things, and went very well. And we appreciate Valerie, who, for us in that area, being willing to work on that with us. And I'd also say, for Stone Memorial, Valerie really spearheaded our effort internally in coming up with three proposals that we made. Some certainly give us an option to, now, select it. We thank very well with the support and the praise. In our marketing division, you have unemployment report for the month. We continue to have very low unemployment, with most respect, for that three to three and a half percent of the full employment in our area. We, our staff participated in meeting with Norfolk Southern. There's new Norfolk Southern marketing people on board now, and we talked to them about how to market Track Two, Common Crossing, as we continue with that site's development. We have submitted an RFI to Site Selectors Guild. That's the most, probably the premier site selection group in the country, and we've been invited as one of only 15 sites into a pilot program to promote a site in your area in Common Crossing, Track Two, as a site we will be promoting through that platform on a national and international basis. That's been a very good, good opportunity for us. We submitted a lot of new delegates, and we'll talk about this more as we go forward. Margarole Development is a group we're working with to build another show building on Lot Two at Patriot Center, and we're progressing very well there. And they brought us an opportunity that we think will be very good, and we'll continue to work. We're working through the idea, and we're working through the board as we, over the next couple of months, as we finalize that. Tourism, we've got 14 site visits and consultations. Now, you can see the calls and the packages, the distribution of 200 activity guides that have gone out, and you can see 12 businesses that have received them in the last month. There are 38 locations in Martin Luther County that we've stocked with our guys on a regular basis. Also, 775 with Norfolk Business Center, and you see we let copy the new Workforce Development and Visor publication that's done completely in-house by staff, designed and written and proof by our staff, Beth Marshall and Sarah Hodges and her staff really takes a lead on that. It's a great publication, and that goes out all over Virginia too. It's really good information, both from a visitor standpoint and a workforce development standpoint of trying to recruit labor. Tourism folks had an interview with B99 promoting upcoming tourism efforts at Henry County Fair and updated all the photography for that event. Dick and Willie, specifically, the trail out by Smith River, had 3,686 folks on it in August and 3,629 in September. Very good participation there, or usage. Again, on a biweekly basis, 16,000 subscribers given equal access from our tourism department and quarterly newsletter, one to 250 partners. In our Workforce Development Division, we have submitted a visit Martinsville, a visit Martinsville ad for the 24 Virginia travel guide, which is something we do every year. There have been, we've translated some of our visit Martinsville and business development flyers, have been translated in Spanish for the Latino Festival of Southern Virginia. We've donated tent cards that will go out this weekend, businesses and restaurants all over advertising the mobile app so that race fans can go on that and find out everything there is doing Martinsville, Henry County, where to eat, where to shop, that sort of thing, while they're here. It's been very well received, that app. We continue to gather photography for Martinsville, during the Martinsville Speedway press event, and at the fair, and other activities that we can put on our website. And from a development standpoint, we've had meetings with hotel developers looking at the old Martinsville, American Martinsville property downtown, as well as out at 58 and 220. We continue to work very hard with trying to get a new hotel property in our community anywhere we can, and Sarah Hodges has worked with these folks for a year. It's a long process, and we will continue that. Our staff presented the startup Martin Luther County Outdoors in the last month, and we also had staff that attended swearing in a new city manager. So, a very busy month for us in all sectors or all divisions, right? I'll have to answer any questions right now.
Mark, I just want you to clarify one thing. On the Dine Small, on Small Business Saturday, November 25, I think you mentioned that the tickets could be picked up on November 25. We might want to make it clear when they can pick those up at the, at NCI?
She's right.
I think it's the April 13, sorry, no, 13.
Okay.
Only the years.
25th. Thank you.
You got it. The lady didn't say. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
That takes us to Financial Matters, Agenda number nine, 9A, an award of contract referencing replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $118,926 to Sheehy Ford located in Richmond, Virginia, for the purchase of three Ford police interceptor utility vehicles. The pricing is based on the Virginia Insurance Association Virginia procurement program and its specifications, and funding for this purchase is included in the fiscal year 2024 capital deferments program. And Lieutenant Colonel Hairston is here. Do you have any questions?
In regard to awarding of this contract, what action would the board desire to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the contract of $118,926 to Sheehy Ford for three police interceptor utility vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine B, an additional appropriation referencing bulletproof vest program for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to appropriate a grant in the amount of $31,911 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Program. The grant will provide protective vests for law enforcement personnel. Funds in the current operating budget will be used for the required 50% local match. And again, a representative from the sheriff's office is here. Do you have a question?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $31,911 received from the Department of Justice for the purchase of bulletproof vests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine C, an additional appropriation referencing DMV traffic enforcement grant for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
The sheriff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $32,400 received from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for traffic enforcement-related activities. The grant is a pass-through funding received from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. The funds will be used to pay overtime for the deputies to perform extra traffic enforcement measures and travel-related expenses related to the day.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what motion would the board like to consider?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation of $32,400 received from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine D, an additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Commonwealth's Attorney Andrew Nestor is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $5,876 from the state asset forfeiture funds to purchase replacement furniture for his office. Let me correct it for the office in general, not his specific office.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $5,876 from the state asset forfeiture funds for the purpose of replacement furniture for the office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine E, an additional appropriation referencing staffing recognition grant for the 911 Communications Center. Mr. Wagner.
Chair Dillard, Director of the Martin Luther County 911 Communications Center, is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $65,000 received through a grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, 911, and Geospecial Services Bureau. The grant will provide a one-time retention incentive stipend of $2,322 to all full-time 911 center employees. The grant must be used for this purpose and does not require a local match. And Director Dillard is here, should you have any questions.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $65,000 received from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Grants for stifling for the 911 center employees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine F, an additional appropriation referencing geographic information system software grant for the 911 Communications Center. Mr. Wagner.
Director Dillard of the 911 Communications Center is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $3,000 received from the same agency as the previous grant for the purchase of mission critical software used to maintain the geographical information systems used in the 911 center.
Okay. What action would board like to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $3,000 for the GIS software for the 911 center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine G, an award of contract referencing water booster pump station emergency generators. Mr. Wagner.
At your August 2023 meeting, you appropriated grant funds to purchase and install emergency generators for the PSA water system. Staff is asking the board to approve a contract in the amount of $225,615 to Fidelity Power Systems for generators at the Oak Level and 10th Street Water Booster Pump Stations. These generators will provide backup power to the water booster pumps during power outages, ensuring PSE customers receive an adequate water supply during those times. Once the generators are installed and it's operated for a period of time, the ownership and maintenance of the generators will be transferred to the public service of the public. Pricing for this award was an Sourcewell contract and has been approved by the purchasing department for this purpose.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the contract of $225,615 to Fidelity Power Systems for the purchase of and installation of emergency generators at the Oak Level and 10th Street at Fielddale Water Booster Pump Station.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine H, an award of contract referencing water quality credits for the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Wagner.
This request is related to our ongoing development of Lot Two Common Crossing Business Center. Staff is asking the board to approve a contract for $90,000 to shoulder-run Nutrient Bank for the purchase of 10 phosphorus credits related to that development. This effort is part of the environmental requirements necessary and required for Lot Two.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what action would board desire to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the contract with shoulder-run Nutrient Bank for $90,000 to purchase the phosphorus credits necessary for granting Lot Two at CCBC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda item number 10, a designation of a voting representative to the 2023 Virginia Association of Counties known as VACO Annual Business Meeting. Mr. Wagner.
The Virginia Association of Counties Annual Business Meeting is scheduled for November 14, 2023, and each county has asked a designated member of its elected board and an alternate to vote on the county's behalf on any issues that may arise during that time. It is my understanding that Mr. Bryant, Mr. Dillard, and Mr. Slaughter are attending the meeting, and as well Deputy County Administrator J.R. Powell.
Okay. What is the desire of the board as nominating a voting representative and an alternate?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to nominate Joe Bryant as a voting representative, and Mr. Garrett is the alternate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Bryant to be the voting representative, Mr. Dillard to be the alternate. Any discussion? That means no complaints after this.
I just give up the position. I've had it for the last 15 years, so.
Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for being voluntold that you're going to be doing that. At this time, Agenda item number 11, we'll take informational items, starting with comments from the board, beginning with Mr. Zayer.
No, sir.
Mr. Dillard.
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Only that I would just like to thank you all for your vote and confidence of being representative of the county. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Buchanan.
Well, I'll take the opportunity again to promote the coat drive for kids, and anyone having new coats or gently-used coats certainly would appreciate them being donated. They can be dropped off at one-hour Martinizing, particularly on Reeves Road or at Hollywood Cinema, or give me a call. And we work with the Henry County School System and Mr. Garrett Dillard, and we certainly hope that we can keep all the children in our area warm this winter.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Just a couple items, if you could give me a few moments. The county and the PSA are undertaking a significant cybersecurity initiative within, with the Department of Homeland Security. And if it's okay, I'm going to ask Mark Alley, I'm Director of Information Technology, to give you a brief update on that initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I'd like to take a moment to bring the board up to the Information Services Department's efforts to strengthen Henry County cybersecurity posture. For the past several years, local government IT departments across Virginia and the nation have been bombarded with ever-increasing cybersecurity concerns. Cyber threats are always evolving, and we must constantly adapt and update our policies to meet these needs. Our cybersecurity to-do list gets longer each day. As an example, the Virginia Department of Elections and the Virginia State Police have both issued very specific and both issued very specific and strict standards that we must comply with. As a department, we've made it our top priority to do everything we can to meet these standards while maintaining our own high cybersecurity standards. However, even though we're doing everything we can, there's still always room for improvement. As such, we have enlisted the help of CISA. CISA is an acronym for the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. As a division of the Federal Department of Homeland Security, they are the agency that leads the effort to enhance security, resiliency, and reliability of the nation's cybersecurity and communications infrastructure. So, within the next couple of months, a team of four CISA analysts will be flown in from different locations across the country to conduct an extensive cybersecurity assessment of Henry County's cyber infrastructure. This assessment will be very broad and look at everything, from individual user computer habits to most intricate details of the county's computer network. They will point out our strong points, and they'll also let us know our weak points. This is not meant just to find faults in our computer system and penalize us. It's much more meant to help us expose any gaps that we have in our cybersecurity policies and offer suggestions on how to meet those gaps. We certainly hope that no major issues are uncovered. However, if we're left with a to-do list, I feel confident that we have a great team that's up to the challenge. In closing, I'd like to note that cybersecurity can be very expensive at times. Funding is one of the major challenges we face meeting cybersecurity standards. Cyber assessments of this magnitude conducted by private consultants would likely cost tens of thousands of dollars. With that said, this entire CISA assessment comes at no cost whatsoever to the county, and I think we're very lucky to be able to take advantage of it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Is that update?
Just a reminder, the Community Veterans Day Ceremony is November eleventh at eleven a.m. at the historic John D. Vassett Events Center, and the Outstanding Military Veteran Award will also be presented at this event. And related to this, I want to call our attention to a couple of our employees. Henry County prides itself on being a veteran-friendly employer. We are V-Three certified by Commonwealth of Virginia, and we have two of our officers that are either that has been deployed in efforts of our security posture within the United States. Sergeant Doug Smith with the Henry County Sheriff's Office was deployed on December sixth, excuse me, October sixth for an assignment for several months, and then Sergeant George Sims with the Henry County Sheriff's Office is being deployed on December twenty-eighth for service to our country as well. So be with the, keep those gentlemen in your thoughts and prayers over the next many months as they serve our country, and we wait anxiously for them to come back and continue their service with our service. That's all I have.
Right, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, I'll accept a motion that allows us go into closed meeting if someone would do that on behalf of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion at the board convenes in closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.237-11A1 for discussion of appointees to the Community Policy and Management Team, Patriot Center/CCBC Advisory Board, Western Virginia Emergency Medical Services Council Incorporated, and West Piedmont Planning District Commission 2.237-11A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.237-11A3 for discussion of acquisition-disposal of real estate, 2.237-11A5, discussion of as-yet unannounced industries, 2.237-11A30 for discussion of contract negotiations, and 2.237-11A10 for discussion of awards and recognition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. On a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Zaire, Mr. Powell, will you poll the board?
Yes, sir. Board members, to best of your knowledge on the public business matters, law is exempted from open meeting requirements for the Virginia Section 2.237-11A30 discussed or considered in closed meeting. How do you vote, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. George?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a board appointment for the consideration today.
Yes, sir, I do. It's on the Patriot Center Advisory Board. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to renominate Richard Hall, Terry Kundav, Nubby Coleman, and Gary Gibson to the Patriot Center Advisory Board for a length of two years, expiration date expiring December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Names being Richard Hall, Terry Kundav, Nubby Coleman, and Gary Gibson. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Zaire, I believe that you have a real estate matter for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to accept the donation of approximately one-hundred-and-twenty acres in associated personal property from EIBP Incorporated and to authorize Chairman Adams to sign documents related to the transaction.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Ms. Buchanan, likewise, I believe that there is a real estate matter that you would like to bring before the board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Henry County Board of Supervisors purchase three parcels of land consisting of approximately seven-point-five acres from Donald Trantham Jr. These said parcels being located on the westerly side of River Road in the Horse Pasture District. The purchase price shall be twelve thousand dollars, and the county administrator and county attorney are authorized to execute such documents and deeds as necessary to complete the transaction.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Dillard, I believe that a public hearing notification might be in the form of a motion by you.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we hold a public hearing on November twenty-eighth and six o'clock for the consideration of a siding agreement for the Rocky Ford Solar Project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have any items of business that the board needs to consider prior to a recess?
None at this time.
Board members, do you have any? Not, we'll stand in recess and start promptly at six o'clock. They haven't done any official action. Good evening, everyone. Like to welcome you to the October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, six p.m. session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors that I will call back to order from our brief recess from earlier this afternoon. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board specifically, you must sign up seven days in advance to be placed on an agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, Matters Presented by the Public that will take up later in the meeting tonight under Agenda Item Twenty-One. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. We do not have representation of V-Dot tonight because of a conflict. If you desire board members to offer any comments, you may want to try to email them or pass them on through the county administration office and get feedback in that regard. That was Agenda Item Thirteen, and so that will take us to Agenda Item Fourteen. We'll have a public hearing, a rezoning application, R dash twenty-three dash fifteen. W, Jeff, and Janet C. Evans, we have with us tonight, to give us background material on that, our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark.
Okay, this property is located at five forty-four Valley Drive. It's in the Blackberry District. Taxent number is thirty-nine-two-seven lot eleven F. The applicant requesting the rezoning were approximately five-point-six acres from rural residential district to agricultural district A one, and the applicant wishes to continue to keep chickens on the property. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application. Is anyone desiring to address the board during this public hearing on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six oh two. This is in my district. I feel like the planning commission has vetted this very well. I agree with their decision if someone would make a motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, a public hearing, a rezoning application, R dash twenty-three dash sixteen. Kevin D. and Brenda C. Cockham. Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located immediately west and south of twenty-nine fifty-five Dillon's Fork Road. It's in the Blackberry District. Taxent number is thirty-nine-two-sixty-nine B. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning were approximately twelve-and-a-half acres from rural residential district to agricultural district A one, and the applicant wishes to market the property for potential agricultural purposes. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request also.
I'll open the public hearing to take any input on this rezoning application. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six oh three. Likewise, this is in my district. I agree with the planning commission on this. If someone would make a motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Okay. We have at least two. I'll accept a motion and one as being a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Sixteen, rezoning application, R dash twenty-three dash seventeen. Charles M. and Patricia Turner. Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located at forty-nine ninety Stones Dairy Road in the Blackberry District. Taxent number is twenty-five-five lot two sixty-one B. The applicant's request in the rezoning were approximately three-point-four-two acres from mixed residential district to agricultural district A one, and the applicant wishes to build accessory structures on the property larger than what is allowed under the mixed residential zoning. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at six oh four p.m. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six oh Likewise, this one is also in my district, and I do agree with the planning commission. If someone will make a motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the rezoning as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Seventeen, a public hearing, rezoning application, R dash twenty-three dash eighteen. Leobardo Ramirez and Daisy Ramirez and business name L. S. Conbley. Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located at thirty-four Tower Road in the Recreem District. Taxent number sixteen-eight twenty-two-three E. The applicant is requesting the rezoning were approximately one-point-seven-nine acres from industrial district A one to commercial district B one. The applicant wishes to establish a restaurant in the existing building. This building and site were designed and constructed to accommodate industrial warehouse use where parking, where the required parking is determined by the number of employees working at one time. Site currently has fourteen parking spaces. A commercial restaurant in this building would require approximately ninety parking spaces, given that square footage. Given the size and layout of this lot, it will not accommodate a commercial restaurant change of use. Therefore, rezoning to commercial B one would not be appropriate. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended denial of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at six oh six. Is there anyone desiring to address the board in regard to this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six oh seven. Mr. Slaughter, this is in your district.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As bad as I hate to go against businesses, I'm going to have to agree with the planning and deny this because it's just not feasible. I mean, fourteen parking spaces wouldn't even accommodate the employees, much less anybody else, so. Need to be unless they can come up with some more parking area.
So, I'll take that as a motion to deny.
No, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Eighteen, public hearing, proposed amendment to the ordinance regarding real estate tax relief. Mr. Wagner.
The county has an ordinance to provide for real estate tax relief for certain elderly disabled and handicapped as to way it's described in the ordinance. The ordinance currently allows for an exemption for individuals with income below seventeen thousand dollars annually, with the maximum annual exemption on any one property at three hundred dollars. As part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget, I recommend that the board consider increasing the annual threshold. Thus, staff is recommending that the income threshold be increased to twenty-four thousand dollars with the maximum exemption capped at five hundred dollars. The discount is tiered based on an individual's total income, and you have that tiered outlined in your packet. The change should only have a modest impact on the county's annual budget, and a county that public hearing is required to make this change and properly advertise for this.
All right, I will open this public hearing at six oh eight p.m. to take any input. Is there anyone desiring to comment during this public hearing for the proposed amendment to the ordinance regarding real estate tax relief? Seeing and hearing no indication from anyone as such, I will close the public hearing at six oh nine p.m. What is the desire of the board in regard to this proposed amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the ordinance regarding real estate tax relief.
Second.
All right. Do we need to state the effective date?
Yes.
Effective day, January first, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we did that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, public hearing, proposed amendment to the ordinance regarding transit occupancy tax rates. Mr. Wagner.
As part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget, it was suggested to increase the transit occupancy taxes as a means to fund tourism-related expenses. Staff has recommended that the rate be increased from two percent to five percent as permitted by the Code of Virginia. In addition, it is suggested that penalty clause be included in the county ordinance section eight dash one-four-zero-zero to make the policy more consistent for penalties assessed for late payments of other taxes, and to also set the effective date to January first, twenty-twenty-four. The public hearing, which has been properly advertised for this meeting, is required in order to change the ordinance and adopt a new rate. In addition to advertising the public hearing, I also sent letters directly to all of the hotels and lodging venues in the area to make them aware that an increase was being considered. And after your public hearing, I could certainly share that feedback I received as a result of those letters, if you'd like to know.
The board has as part of its working papers the existing ordinance with some strike-throughs making it the proposed ordinance. With that, I will open a public hearing to take input on this at six eleven p.m. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this public hearing regarding the transit occupancy tax rates? Anyone? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six eleven p.m. What is the desire of the board in regard to this? What is the desire of the board in regard to this proposed amendment?
You're gonna give us that information prior to or after we make a motion?
Whenever you want.
Okay, is it possible just to hear some of it?
So I received one letter from Mr. Ed Kate of Stewart Hill, Ben and Burkes, and he primarily expressed concern and dissatisfaction with the tax, and it would increase costs to the people that stand in his property and could perhaps discourage him from staying in our community. I think I provided a copy of that letter to you. The only other information related to this with all the advertisements in the letters is the Marshall Henry County Economic Development Corporation, which is the designated primary tourism organization for our area, has unanimously endorsed a new tax and supports using it to maintain, promote tourism-related facilities and activities to attract more visitors to our area. And you should have a copy of that letter in front of you.
Also, just so that everyone understands, as compared to other localities, whether it be Eden, Greensboro, Danville, Runo, how do these proposed rates compare?
This is as high or no higher than anywhere else of any of our neighbors. The city of Marshall increased their rate to seven percent effective with their current budget that they're in now. Rockingham County, North Carolina, is above five percent. Patrick County, I can't remember exactly what their rate was, but I'm thinking it was five percent. City of Danville is even higher than that. So yes, we're in line with our jurisdictions surrounding us. Many cities in Virginia are much higher than that. They're ten, eleven, twelve percent. And this is as high as Henry County can legally go without getting general assembly for...
As far as a motion to approve, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the transit occupancy... occupancy tax ordinance as recommended, including changing the rate from two percent to five percent on January the first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number twenty, public hearing, budget amendment appropriating grant funds for emergency generators. Mr. Wagner.
Henry County was recently awarded two grants totaling three billion ninety-four thousand and eighty-eight dollars. That's a corrected amount from what you see in your packet from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the purchase of emergency generators. The first grant was to purchase and install twelve emergency generators from various locations, including Bassett and Magnavista High Schools, the Public Safety Complex, the Sherman Station, the Patriot Center Fire Station, six volunteer fire departments, and then it also includes a portable generator for the Adult Detention Center. The second grant was awarded specifically for the generator project at Bassett High School, and we will use, it will be used to cover any outages specifically related to that part of the project. The second grant does require a thirty percent match, but we do have an understanding from the Commonwealth that the expenses from the first grant could be used to match the requirements of the second grant. Since the total grant amount exceeds one percent of the total county budget, the board must hold a public hearing before appropriating the funds. Staff requested after you hold the public hearing that the board appropriate the grant funds and then award the site-specific contracts to Fidelity Power Systems for this work and installation of the generators.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this item, which is a budget amendment appropriating grant funds for emergency generators. That opened the public hearing at six fifteen P.M. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this public hearing? Yes, sir. I have a brief statement to make as you're coming to the podium. This is time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. As you come to the podium, state your name. We know the subject matter on this particular instance, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you agree you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Todd Norman. I live in the Blackberry District. I'm a bar chief for the Volunteer Fire Department. Upon hearing of the grants, I have spoken out to most of the volunteer fire chiefs. We are grateful to hear that we were awarded this grant. It's gonna be a great benefit to the fire departments to have these generators installed and operating along with additional locations that Mr. Wagner has spoke of. I am all for what we'll be doing with appropriation of money, and I hope that the board goes forward and has this accepted and approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Is there anyone else desiring to address the board on this public hearing? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six seventeen. As far as action on this item, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of three million two hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars received from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the purchase of twelve emergency generators and awarding the site-specific contracts to Fidelity Power Systems of Enrico, Virginia for purchases.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner gave a different amount.
Correct your motion to use the revised number that I provided, three million ninety-four thousand eighty-eight dollars.
Which one?
You don't have it in front of you.
Yeah, yours got three million two hundred sixty-three thousand. His new one is three million...
Ninety-four.
Three million ninety-four thousand?
Eighty-eight dollars.
And eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, we'll accept that as amended motion and a second to that. Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero, Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item number twenty-one, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone wishing to address the board tonight under matters presented by the public? I see one hand. I see two hands. Again, the statement that I read prior to Mr. Norman coming to the podium for the public hearing is applicable to our matters presented by the public. Please try to keep your presentation between three to five minutes. Ms. Martin, I saw your hand first.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. First of all, I want to start off by thanking Ryan Zayer for his service to the constituents in Ridgeway. He has been an exemplary example of what a supervisor should be, and we will miss you. Now, the reason on here, my first question is, back in June, I believe, there was a compensation studies done to try to raise the pay scales up in Henry County for the county's employees, sheriff's department, and the school system. And this study was presented, I believe, in June. Well, in September, at the last meeting, Mr. Wagner presented to you this study for the county employees with the recommendation for a raise, which they were given. And that's great. I love it when anybody gets a raise. But at this point, I've not heard anybody address the school compensation for the teachers. I don't know if there's a lack of communication between the two boards, or if it's just something nobody's gonna fool with, and Lord knows, I hope that's not the case. But the school system that we have, having a strong system is a backbone of our economic development. This should be as high a priority on your list of things to do as getting jobs in here. And we have got to keep them at a good pay scale. The study recommended five point three percent to six percent increase for teachers, with teachers with thirty years and plus, a little bit more than that, to make them comparable to our surrounding areas. Yet there's not been any discussion from the board, at least not publicly, that I'm aware of. And I've had a lot of teachers ask me to come here tonight and ask the question, why hasn't been addressed? And is it going to be addressed? Is it going to be presented by Mr. Wagner? Or do we need to have the school administration come in and present it? But somebody needs to tell the school system and the teachers one way or the other. Are you gonna consider what the compensation study recommended? Or is it just not gonna have any discussion and it's just gonna go away? And I'm not really ready to accept this, we don't have any money, because we found money for the county races, and I'm not knocking that. I'm happy the county got races. I'm happy when anybody gets a raise. But they found four hundred ninety-seven thousand to do the initial implementation for the county races. They took a hundred thousand from federal loan assistance and tribal contingency funds, and then three hundred ninety-seven thousand from interest income from the jail construction account, which I would have thought that would have went to pay down the taxpayers' debt on the jail. But if you want to give folks raises, really, that's great, but include your teachers. So I sincerely believe that there needs to be better communication and transparency between board supervisors and the school board, because there seems to have just somebody on one side or the other, and I don't know which. The ball's been dropped, but there has been no consideration for that study and what it recommended for our Henry County school teachers, and it needs to be addressed. And that's the reason I'm here, because both boards, y'all need to be more transparent with the public, and the taxpayers deserve better, and our teachers definitely deserve better. So I'm hoping that in the very near future, we're gonna hear some discussion from this board concerning the compensation study and what it recommended for the Henry County schools of teachers, because I'm very disappointed that it hasn't even been mentioned. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Stegall, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Ellen. I'm Doug Stegall from Collinsville, and I hope I get the support from the sheriff's department on this. I'm trying to get overhead warning lights put at the intersection of Colonial Drive, Kings Mountain Plantation there. And I hadn't had much luck with it. I've been talking to Kenneth King, senior engineer from, he's over twelve counties. To his boss, Kevin Gregg, out of Richmond. He's supposed to be calling me back this week. And I know Joe has told me before, he hadn't had much luck getting much done because of smart scale and anything has to do with the roads here. But there is money out there for the safety, and the people in the Collinsville Highlands are getting older. When they come out of Colonial Drive on the Kings Mountain Road, some of them have to sit there and sit there, especially in the evenings. Even Joe has commented how busy the traffic is in the evenings on Kings Mountain Road. And hadn't had much luck with Lisa Bryce Hughes. But maybe with the support, if they could get support on the sheriff's department on this, and maybe Joe could have some town hall meetings and let the public get involved. The people I've talked to, they are full. Dale Wagner told me that having a stoplight there was never gonna happen. They're not gonna put up stoplights anymore. But the overhead warning lights would help us if we could just get... They did come through there last week and put in rumble strips and reduced the speed, and that's the last thing I thought we needed, because we don't need to reduce the speed and slow down the traffic there, slow down the congestion. Maybe Joe could have a town hall meeting with us. I did talk to Mike Rogers. He was in the Martinville Police Department. He lives over there in Collinsville Highlands. He's authoritative in everybody. Kenneth King did tell me that a petition wouldn't do any good, but I don't wanna agree with that. And I think it would. But I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stegall. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public?
I want to, Jim, I want to...
Hold on, Mr. Stegall.
Well, I need to stop to see if anyone else, and I'll be right to you, Ms. Buchanan and Ms. Bryan. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, with that, we're closing agenda item number twenty-one, but I will take comments from the board. Ms. Buchanan, I heard you first.
I did. I know Mrs. Martin had contacted me last week in regard to that, and it was my understanding that the school board had not taken any action on that, and the school superintendent had not talked with Mr. Wagner. Has that changed, Mr. Wagner?
So I spoke with Dr. Amy Blake Lewis about their pay study, and she conveyed to me that the school system has not thoroughly vetted their study recommendations. You gotta imagine, we, her pay study, in fact, four hundred and thirty-two employees, and it was literally thousands of hours spent by county staff going through those to make sure they were accurate, to make sure the market data was compared into locality that it should be compared to, and all the many factors that go into a compensation study. As you know, there was quite a bit of transition in the school system with the new superintendent, new assistant superintendent. She simply told me that they had not had the resources at the time adequate to vet that compensation study and come back with a recommendation. Additionally, to my knowledge, the school board has not taken any action on this school's compensation. And I think it would be premature for this board to take on action on a school-related matter before the school board ever takes action on it. But to answer your question, that's what I was conveying to you last week.
I understand. And I saw Mr. Boone. Did you have some comment, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to point out, the study wasn't released until the end of May, beginning of June, and at that time, our budget for this fiscal year was already developed. We actually had to bring the budget back to you all in early July with the skinny budget that was passed. At that time, our teachers and employees, they all received pretty much a seven percent raise at that time for this fiscal year. We're actually, where the governor signed the budget in September, we received feedback from the Virginia Department of Education in October with the budget amendments for this year that we're in now, that we're actually gonna bring back in November for this school year. So as we look for our budget for next year, we are using the salary study as a tool and a resource as we develop our budget for next year and look at compensation for teachers and employees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Mr. Bryan, I heard.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stegall. Mr. Stegall, I have talked to Lisa Hughes about what your concern on Colonial Drive, and she assured me that she was gonna make some changes and do some studies on that. One was, there's never gonna be a red light. Like Mr. Wagner said, they're not gonna put a red light up there. Number two, they'll probably never put an overhead caution light over there also. But they may put caution lights coming up the hill, warning of the traffic coming out of Colonial Drive into Kings Mountain Road also. You know, there's not a lot you can do, you know, for traffic, because it gets congested in that area.
When you're coming out of Collinsville over here, you're right at the intersection.
Right, right. That's why we're trying to get the caution lights up to let people know that there's a road there to slow down.
So you're trying to get a lot?
Yes, sir. Been working on it.
Okay, other items? Mr. Wagner, do you have any other business items for the board's consideration?
I do have.
Yes, sir.
I know we're getting ready for... And I have a youngster at the house, and, you know, I know her and her friends will probably wanna go out and do some trick or treating. I'd like to ask Sheriff Davis just to give us some tips, you know, with all the fake gummies and all sorts of stuff out there, just so we can get something hopefully in the paper for parents who are taking their kids out, you know, Halloween night, or sometime during the Halloween holiday, or whatever it is.
Sure, be glad to, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So this trick or treat season, this coming Saturday, the twenty-eighth is race weekend, but there are also a number of events throughout the community. We've been trying to get a comprehensive schedule of those so we can have our deputies visit those. But Halloween or trick or treat will also be celebrated again on the thirty-first, which is Tuesday, and we have a list of several dozen community events that are going on there, so our resources to try to get to those will be spread thin, but we're making every effort. And that's on top of the many subdivisions throughout our community our children will be in. But our trick or treat comprehensive list will be posted to the sheriff's office Facebook page later this week. This is something we do annually anyway, and it's a lengthy list. There are a number of recommendations, but number one... of recommendations, but number one is missionary children supervised, reflective materials on their costumes, nothing too darkly colored, give them flashlights to utilize, but most important, then we recommend, obviously, since we were all children, have your parents inspect your candies before you eat them, look at them, only go to places that you can trust. Many of our churches throughout the community, we have trunk-or-treat events, and those are usually pretty reputable events for our community members to stick to, but if you'll tune into the Sheriff's Office Facebook page later this week, we will have a comprehensive list of Halloween safety tips posted, as well as a, a pretty good list of the events going on throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Davis.
Thank you.
Mister Still, anything else? Thank you.
No, sir, that's it.
Mister Wagner, do you have any other business for the board's consideration?
I just want to welcome the race teams, drivers, pit crews, and the thousands of visitors to our community for NASCAR Race Week. It starts off Wednesday evening with an opportunity for fans to take laps around Martinsville Speedway, to raise money for charity. On Thursday evening, it's the Virginia for Lovers Two Hundred Modified Race. Saturday is the Dead Home Tools Two Fifty Xfinity Race, which will set four teams for the championship series in that series. And Sunday is the Xfinity Five Hundred NASCAR Cup Race, and it is the last race before the championship race, so we welcome the race fans, Sheriff.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have any other items that we need to consider tonight? The doctor takes us to agenda item twenty-two, if I can get a motion.
Second.
There will be a motion for adjournment, which is our agenda item number twenty-two. All in favor? Six zero, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening, thank you for coming out tonight.